Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we're gonna turn this over in case everybody doesn't know, this is Betty Riley, um, so, Central Oregon Economic Development Department?
District, yes.
District.
Say that twenty times.
I actually have learned to say it all when I was graduating, so, yes. And I hope, I, I know, I may not sound sinussy, but I have kinda like that sinus, so everything I'm hearing is in my head before it gets to you, so, I hope I don't sound that way, but anyway, I, I've had that little bit of some cold thing that's going around. First of all, just, uh, give you a little bit of my background. Uh, I've actually been doing economic development planning for thirty years. I started in the Sierras, uh, working for an economic development district that covered four counties and, and, uh, seven, or, yeah, uh, I think I had fifteen jurisdictions down there that I worked for, uh, in the, in the Plaza Nevada, Sierra County, uh, El Dorado County area. So, I, I've been working with small communities and big communities, doing strategic planning for, for a long time. Uh, since coming to, uh, Climate Falls, that was almost thirteen years ago, we've been, I'm working now on my third update to the strategic economic development plan for the region, but this is a little different today. What I'm working on is not with you, is your plan. It's not so much a economic development strategy for, you know, for the whole two county area. It is a plan for the, the city council itself, actually, to, to kind of look at what is their, what is your mission, what is your vision, and what are the strategic goals that you hope to accomplish? And so, it, it is a process that we go through, and part of that process is kind of, sometimes people don't, are not process people, but I, I apologize for those that don't really kind of appreciate that step-by-step process, but really, I think what it helps you do is, is really focus in on what are the most important things to you about your community, and where is it that you would like to be? And, and where is it that your constituents want you to be also? So, you're, you're here representing your roles as representatives of the community itself. Uh, I have, am a little bit of a data person, so I've looked up some of the statistics on, on your community, and, and one of the things that I think was fascinating to me was that, first of all, most people, you know, think of small communities like this of not having a whole lot of, of high-end jobs, but if you look at the employment base in the community of Lakeview, and this is actually data that I know that, that we've been putting together for the economic analysis thing, nine hundred of the eighteen hundred jobs in this community are government jobs, and the average city wage is over forty thousand dollars per worker. The government jobs are actually closer to an average of fifty thousand dollars per person. So you have, first of all, a very strong dedication to, uh, housing and, and having, your constituents are really people who are here working for the government. And some of that's hospital, some of that's county, and a lot of that also is Forest Service, uh, ODF, uh, BLM, and all the federal agencies who are housed here also. You're, uh, and you do have a strong dependence also in industrial sectors, and you do have, you know, three very strong manufacturing companies in this community, uh, with another one coming in soon, hopefully, and a couple of smaller ones who are really, are growing at this point in time. So you are strong in that manufacturing sector. Lot, a lot of rural counties have lost that. Not that most of the rural counties in Oregon and in Northern California have lost their industrial sector. So to be, to, to the fact that you still have one sawmill, it's a good thing, and that you still also have some value out of wood manufacturing products and, and other things that are being produced here, is not typical. And then there's cornerstone, which is another strong industry and has some opportunities to do some expansion also. Uh, your other high ones also, you do have a lot of leisure activity, that's kind of that tourism aspect of what you have to offer. It's not so strong in the city as it is countywide, uh, you don't, but you do have the, the motels, hotels, food restaurants, and those types of things, so. Uh, other statistics, I know this is a little off the wall, but did you know that ten percent of your workforce walks to work? So you, you actually have ten percent of the people that live in the community who walk to work. So to me, that would be a valuable aspect of what living in this community means. And so, I'd like to kinda hear from you, your, what, what are the things that you see that are kind of the, what I call the heart and soul of this community? Just, uh, just off the top of your head, what, what is the one thing you would wanna make sure you never lose? Right?
Um, friendliness.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody's friendly, you walk down the street and you don't know them, but they'll, you know, you stop and talk to them.
Okay.
You know?
I think all those great jobs you were talking about with the federal government.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Federal government, local government.
Okay, yeah.
It's got atmosphere of the town.
What was that?
I should say atmosphere of the town.
Okay.
The general public community reacts to each other.
Okay, so it's just, uh, it's just a feel, it's a community feeling?
Yeah.
Okay. Nikki, I, I haven't met you.
I, I think for me, it would be part of what I fell in love with this community that I would love to see stay is the heritage, the history of the community.
Heritage, right, okay. And Darin?
So, as far as like, the rural, you know, nature of our community, um, you know, we are a family here, so like, like Ray said, you know, we're taking care of each other. Uh, but really, the ranching community is, is to me, um, you know, a heart and soul of the county, but still.
It still is important.
Part of our heritage and, uh, you know, rely upon a lot, for a lot of our tourism as well still, because a lot of people are coming back, you know, to their, you know, family ranches and stuff, but, you know.
It doesn't show up in your statistics as a community itself, but if you look at your county, agriculture really is the economic driver for this county, and it's where the wealth is, really, in, in the, it's in, on those ranches, but that, you are the, the hub for that ranch, for those ranchers, and, and so that, that is a role that you play. So you're, you're not here just to represent the, the down, the folks that live in your, in the downtown or in your community, but the, the whole county itself as the major metropolitan area for the county.
Some of the great parts about that is that we have, you know, the four-H that the ranchers play into. A lot of the ranchers have, you know, spouses, um, have second jobs in the community, or even second homes in the community, because of the distance and the weather and traveling, but yeah, it's, it's really, um, they're a big part of it, even though they're outlying area.
Yeah, so, so really, just kind of that whole, that the cultural heritage, the, the agriculture, the rural, the rural atmosphere, the friendliness, the just, the, the ability to, uh, feel safe in your community, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it's just, it, you're, you're kind of have that atmosphere. It's the kind of place that I think a lot of people are looking for right now, and, uh, a lot of what I've been reading about where the thirties, or twenty and thirty-year-olds are looking for is really this kind of thing. Roberta, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm gonna, nothing.
Okay.
Except that I have to.
All right. Well, what, kind of the process that I've gotta walk, walk you through with today is, is really, first of all, focusing on, on your mission statement, and do you have an existing mission statement to you? Can someone read it to me?
Can you guys copy? Sorry, I, the mission of the town of Lakeview is to provide citizens with a safe, family-oriented community while promoting sustainable development of our human, economic, and natural resources. We progressively seek a positive future while honoring our heritage.
Does that sound like something you would adopt as your mission statement? Is that something you need to, to refine? Does it define why you exist?
Yes.
Does it tell you what your role is?
Personally, my role is the council servant.
Okay, and so, what is the role of the council primarily? What, what, I, what identifies that, that specific role?
From our statement, or are you just saying, you know, what defines our role as a, what's in our charter? Lots of rules.
Well, I think it is to govern the laws and ordinances for the town, um, and to do that, to give the citizens, you know, the, the, keep their rights, but make sure we have order.
Okay, okay.
I think it's to help, uh, direct growth as well.
Okay.
That's where our ordinances that we have in place are, are there to, I guess we get a planner, obviously, but, you know, it's there to help us determine where we wanna see growth and how and, you know, what matters.
So where and how?
Certainly provide services as well.
Okay. So you provide services?
To.
To who?
To the town's citizens because, you know, water, food, hotel rooms, please.
That's a good one.
They know it's mine.
It's coming back.
So is, is there anything that isn't in your mission statement that you've already got that, that really, uh, is something you want to achieve? You talk about, do you mind if I get it?
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
It's about three quarters of the nation.
Yeah. Provide citizens with safe, family-oriented community while promoting sustainable development of human, economic, and natural resources. So it talks about providing a sense of community, a place, a community. Um, it talks about being family-oriented, and it talks about seeking positive future while honoring heritage. So to me, that means that you kind of manage your growth so that you don't lose those things that are important to you. I actually, you know, unless you feel that that is something that needs to be changed, I think that that is a, the mission statement is something that we can, we can move forward on, and, uh, really, you know, look, look at that then to help you define the next step, which is your vision. And this is really the aspirational side of, you know, where is it that you would like to see this community be? What is it you would hope to accomplish while you're in the role you have that people can look back on and say, "That was a good thing"? Uh, so what is your vision for this community? And we can go twenty years, because you're probably not, still gonna be in city council, but you can help shape the, the future for that long. So, does anyone have any thoughts?
I would, um, you know, with Red Rock coming in and stuff, you know, we're gonna grow.
Okay.
And, you know, Lakeview hasn't really grown, it's stayed about the same for I don't know how many years.
Over fifty, it's been here.
Yeah, and I think the growth would do good, for the fact is, it'll bring in other businesses.
Okay.
And possibly bring in other, to industries.
Okay.
Put more people to work, and maybe our, our youth will come back or stay.
Okay. Okay, so is, how, how is that growth gonna happen? Is this growth in, you know, in the size of the community? Are you gonna have more people living here? Are you going to just, you're gonna have, you're gonna have Red Rock?
Right, but we gotta have housing. Housing's got to be the, you know, basically your number one priority, for the fact is, bringing people in here with no place to live is not gonna help, so we've got to have housing here.
Okay, and we would also have to extend our boundaries, because there's not that many places left to build houses within the city, you know?
We could tear some of these things down.
Yeah, we have some old buildings.
So, the town actually will need to grow, literally, as far as the size, okay? So, is any growth acceptable?
No.
Not according to the state.
So, when you think of growth, when you think of new businesses, do you think of, you know, in some ways, you know, Red Rock is a very unique opportunity that most people...
They're gonna bring in, they're gonna bring in the people.
Right.
And hopefully, the, the people they do bring in, you know, that buy houses or build houses.
So it's actually, yours more is as interested in expanding, in attracting people as you are new industry, because in that, in a way, those people will bring new, new economic opportunities with them also. Do you see, you're wanting to bring in and recruit another big business, or even a thirty-five person business?
Well, I would like to see something else come in here, especially another grocery store.
Well, I actually should've just wrote that on there before you started. I, I have heard that before, yes. Nikki, any, anything that you think, can think of that you see in your big vision of where this community could be?
Well, I'd like to see, you know, I mean, it kinda work towards like the ongoing education for KCC, I'd like to see that expand. I know that they've got some programs at the hospital for RNs, CNAs, I'd like to see education expand.
Okay.
Preschool's a big issue here as well.
Right. So along with that people growth is also those services and, and others, other aspects of being able to educate the folks that are here?
Services is a big one, I mean, we run into a shortage a lot of times, because, you know, doctors, dentists, um, things that, uh...
Tell people, and to tell people when they come here, they can drink the water.
Yeah, that'd be a huge point.
Oh, yeah, yes.
That's an issue.
Okay, so.
It's a running joke, but it's real.
I know, I know your auditions too, so water and grocery store are on the list, yes.
I started saying that, I haven't heard it.
Okay, so, in, you know, kind of putting together that, that vision statement then, um, I have an example of one that I have here from, um, actually, the city of Climate Falls. And their vision statement is a vibrant, cohesive community built on a strong economic base which balances urbanization with its existing historic character and values. So that's kind of what a, a vision statement is. I think yours would be a little different than that, but I think what I hear, you want to be able to, that, that family-friendly was important to you, but you want growth, you want the youth to return, and you want those important essential community services that provided here, so that people don't have to leave town to, to get those. Is that, is that a good summary so far?
Yeah.
What else? Is there anything really aspirational?
One of the things that has been fully touched on here is, is reinvestment in the community.
Okay.
So, like, our, our housing stock is what it is, because people have not reinvested their money into the housing that's here, and a lot of that's because the money's dried up, I mean, with the closure of mills in the eighties, and, you know, the, the mean income dropped by twenty thousand plus, probably, and so, um, you know, people were then, you know, used to living on this, and then had to go to this, and unable to really make the ongoing improvements and the, you know, depreciation just kinda mount, you know, kinda was mounting up, and so.
Right.
I think as, as a housing solve, we're gonna have to get those who own these houses, who, a lot of which sit vacant, um, we're gonna have to somehow convince them the, the times now to, yeah, and maybe it's through incentives, it's, um, you know, the, the city manager and John Day has a, um, has a really good vision for, um, reinvestment and, you know, kinda the incentives behind it, behind it and the taxation, if you improve, you know, you're gonna get assessed more, and a lot of people, I think, probably delay improving their home, because they're afraid that, oh, now we need to hit with this extra tax bill, and so they're stopped.
So they're actually using, uh, a couple of tools there?
Yeah, they, they, you know, kinda delay that, that tax, um, hit by getting them an incentive upfront, and then, and then afterwards, the town's, um, you know, recollected all that money, but you've got, you know, really nice...
Is, is this just housing, or would it also be your commercial?
No, it's certainly commercial as well, yeah, I mean, we got a lot of, you know, not a whole lot of vacant commercial, but we've got, you know, buildings that certainly could use some work. We have preferreds for one, would be one that we'd love to see fixed up. We've, we've been on committees and things that are talking about these things.
Fifteen or any of ours.
Yeah.
There's actually a meetings for tonight that hopefully you have heard about for the economic development analysis, and then again, in April, we will be doing, we'll be doing some town hall meetings related to the Brownsfields, which is really another incentive which you're participating in, which is a way to help property owners look at reuse of old, the old mill sites and the old, uh, the old property, the properties that are brown, considered brownfield.
Yeah, through, yeah, we've got our economic opportunities analysis meeting tomorrow from six to eight up at the courthouse in the commissioner's meeting room. Janine Cannon will be there, I believe she'll probably be there.
At what time?
Six to eight.
Long time.
And I may or may not be there, I'm hoping to, but I don't, it's, it's still taking a long time. So I'm, I'm thinking after, you know, the economic, the housing needs analysis, you've got the Brownsfield project, we've got a lot of things going on right now that...
Right.
That are helping us develop this vision, um, and will help us better understand where we're going to go in the next five to ten years, especially with Red Rock coming, I mean, they're hoping to be done with construction by, you know, January of next year, so that's only nine months away roughly, and, and, you know, we could be turning product out of here, so, um, as soon as that happens, then everything's gonna snowball into, you know, and then, you know, there's, there's a fear on the housing side, if we're gonna be ready for those new employees and stuff, but...
It's already making that happen.
Oh, yeah, it is, and so, you know, we'll, it'll work itself out, and where we can help, you know, if there's things we can do, then I think, you know, we'd be glad to do it. Just, I mean, there's some other examples, I, I think it's Nick Green and, uh, John Day, the city manager.
I, I actually came across his, uh...
Proposal, yeah.
His, his website, and got lost in it, because there's so much information on it, but I did see that their strategy for growth, that, and really, it...
That probably summarizes his plan.
Yeah, and, and their, their focus is, is on actually trying to, uh, they're targeting growth for, of digital commuters, people who can live anywhere and go to work online, active retirees, and young working families, and so is that the same kind of demographic that you would see being attracted to Lakeview? Is, is it, are, do you see that this could become a telecommuniting community?
I'd like to, but I gotta say, it takes a unique young person to enjoy the new area and world.
Okay, so that, that would be, you think it would be challenging to attract, like, thirty?
Well, it would depend on how far away they were from where they were moving, if they had to go there periodically or, you know, too, because that could be a drawback.
I actually have several I rent to now.
Do you?
They do that, yeah, they, they usually come in with the traveling nurses, and the spouse is, uh...
Yes, and that, that actually is an economic development strategy that I, I'm looking at also, is trailing spouses.
Yeah.
You have it...
I've got two right now that have trailing spouses that...
Yeah.
Do all their work online, they're employed back east, and they work online from Lakeview.
And, uh, out in your, outlying areas, not necessarily in town, there are a lot of folks too. There are people who write books, there are people who actually work for, for themselves or for others. Uh, it, it really is surprising how many people are attracted to what you have naturally, which you didn't really mention, your kind of access to the outdoors, the recreation aspects of it. Do you think that's another part of what you need to, you know, continue to do?
It definitely is, and I think in the last couple years, we've hit on hard, and, um, like, um, Travel Origin's been here a couple times, we're working on some things, and, um, you know, there's definitely a presence here, you know, at least in the last couple years that I've seen, I haven't been in, you know, eight years.
There's some representatives, just within here from Southern, or travel Southern.
Let's do it Southern Oregon, yeah.
So, so there are opportunities, it's not doom and gloom, right? Actually, and there is growth happening already. Uh, you know that there's a business in the incubator at the county who is actually on their phase two of their, they're expanding their local business here, and if that takes off, and they're first to market, that could be an amazing type of business to grow here in this community, so there are, there are a lot of opportunities. So, what needs to change? What, what are the conditions now, and what, what needs to happen so that in the future, you know, you can meet that vision?
I think that the businesses, even small businesses, need incentives.
Okay, so what's the condition now? They just struggle on their own?
Well, I mean, honestly, quite honestly, yeah, there, I mean, yes, we have, um, oh, what's the, but we do have, you know, county has a gender, yeah, position there, um, development. But, you know, I mean, for those who don't beat alone, or those who don't qualify for alone, they do struggle, or, you know, lack of the buildings, or, um, those who aren't, you know, on Red Rock, but they're not, not quite a mom and pop, they're kind of an in-between, they need kind of an incentive to make it work while to, because we have a lot of people working out of their homes, so they're basically, bring myself included, I, yeah, we need to, we need to make opportunities, you know, simple things like we toured upstairs and, and we saw all this space, and in my mind, I'm looking like, well, there's four building offices that, you know, we could rent out, or something like that, there's these huge places in this town that we, we need to, you know, give some kind of incentive, because...
So sort of space appropriate to, to grow, okay?
And not just on the person coming in, but also as the owner of these buildings.
So I think that's probably where we're going with, um, some of our, um, affordable lands inventory and stuff like that, I think some of the things we're working on right now are gonna kind of flush out some of these hidden, jammed areas that we've, uh...
So, so we need to kind of...
Just need, we need to know what we have available.
Okay, we need to know those hidden gems, yeah.
We've got giant house community.
I'll meet it.
Okay, so I, I have a term for that, revitalization?
An echo of old...
So the, the, so the now is that we have, uh, properties that are not being kept.
Yeah, beyond repair.
Okay.
I see a lot of them.
There are, there are a lot of houses that are, and I've seen a lot in the last, maybe three years or so, getting bought and fixed up and looking at...
I've done, probably, in, you know, eighteen months that I've been on a rally, I've probably done over twenty houses in Lakeview.
Yeah, it would be really nice to see the vacant inventory decrease significantly. Yeah, it would be really nice to see the vacant inventory decrease significantly.
In some of our shingle residences.
There's some that are just not worth you dealing with and maybe you might as well keep those. I mean, look what we're doing with some of them.
So, part, part of what you wanted to see is an inventory of, of.
We're gonna get it with.
I'm hearing properties, but are we talking commercial, are we talking, uh?
Both.
Both, okay, okay. That is one of the things that we have talked to the state about needing. I call it a housing condition survey, not necessarily a housing need survey because we do need houses, mainly because the average age of a house is almost fifty years in this community.
Mine was fifty, twenty-seven.
Or older.
Mine was twenty-five.
Yeah, but we've had very little new developments in housing. There's basically two besides individual housing.
Okay.
Well, if the houses are gone on those properties, there's a vacant property that people can purchase the property and do build on it then to their specifications or new house then.
So, would you use the term blight? I, I hate to.
The term blight?
Blight.
Yeah, I always think of it as being a huge area, but it, there is small blight, sure.
Because it is one of the things that, uh, you know, is, is being recognized is that there are places that just need to be toured out.
I'd say that's probably twenty percent of the housing.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, but when you include the urban doors found here.
Yeah, we're looking at the cost of construction anymore.
About a hundred thirty-five dollars per foot like you right now.
So, this is very much on track with some of the things that is, that are being looked at, but yes. So that is really, you, you want, you want to see small businesses be able to thrive, uh, so, but through incentives or programs to help them. You want the hidden gems to be identified and, and the properties to kind of be utilized in some way. And so that's, that's a new investment or revitalization of existing, uh, and kind of that may be a little reconfiguration of spaces to be so how they're used, uh.
And how do we get the property owners to cooperate with us? Is.
Ordinances.
That was back incentive.
I think.
I mean, we have, we would have to really be looking at how we would be able to do that.
So, you need tools and that's probably kind of the next step.
Right.
You, you're kind of defining what, what your goals are, but you, you're, then the next step is what are the tools to get you to the things that you can do that are allowed by law? Don't offend every, all the people who elected you to office, right? That's probably a criteria too.
Maybe love us more.
So, a lot of this really has to do with more of buildings and inventory and, and that space. I also heard in your vision that you want, uh, kind of more, uh, services, also more of that, uh, the educational, uh, pieces of that. So is that, is that, is that missing now?
Well, obviously the grocery service issue, I mean, just that, that issue, um, uh, we have a shortage of dentists, I think.
I did find a house to even like.
Which, oh. Managed dental office? Well, that's good to hear.
I'm sure they don't.
You hope you hear at least a year.
Dentists, is what she said, services, I think is really kind of that, there are, uh, I know preschool was also brought up.
Preschool, yeah, we, they are always filled to capacity within a week or two generally unless a spot comes open. And also services, I mean, we have a low income, um, low, technically they take first priority low income, but they do go up as well, but we, we have just a low income and then pretty much early adoption substantially expensive.
Right.
So we have a big, very big gray area. I don't know what the doctors will have, but.
We have plenty of doctors.
I think that's gotten a lot better, yeah.
Actually, with the clinic and.
So, has, has anyone, has anyone ever done a leakage study to really look at what your potential is here? Uh, I don't know if you even know what that is.
No.
Or has it looks, okay. Uh, there, actually, there are consulting firms that will look at what, you know, what your potential, uh, retail sales are and what your loss is out of the community. And I think in many areas you would probably see about eighty percent loss of sales going to other places. So capturing your retail leakage is a strategy that some communities, especially California where retail sales tax is really what, fun city, but, uh, but there are strategies also around trying to expand those services and things, so. Is that something you think would be helpful in this community or?
I know a huge issue is shopping locally here.
Okay, it's more of the shopping local?
It's, yeah.
It's shopping locally and, um, online. I do sixty percent online anyway.
It's way too easy to go.
Mine is cost, I mean.
One place.
The cost of things, you know, and there's things I'll buy in town and it's five bucks more, but you're only getting twenty dollars more and I'm like, ooh, can't justify that, you know?
I mean, you have to travel to Plymouth or you have to go to Ben if you wanna go through, you know, Walmart or any of those, you know? I mean, traveling to get those amenities is easier just to do it online.
So, that is a constraint, I know, and it's not just installed communities.
It's a trend because of free shipping everywhere, yeah.
We are losing major retailers, you know? The latest is my famous, my favorite shoe store.
Payless.
I have a shoe fetish, so.
We are.
I'm not sure what we're gonna do without her, her favorite shoe store.
Sample town.
All right, you have a lot of shoes. Oh, my goodness.
Anything else? What, what I didn't mention to you is I, I gave you all sticky notes. So if anyone thinks that something kind of off topic that you wanna have captured, you know, write it on a sticky note so that we can kind of get that into this whole, you know, thought process. So, where, what I'm planning on doing is coming back to you, uh, with kind of this all into a plan, you know, your mission statement, your vision statement and kind of your, your goals and things. But the other things that I want to kind of help identify is, what are your values? And, and as, and as, you know, a city, as a community, what, what are the values? And for example, uh, uh, we support the economic health of the community, job opportunities for our citizens and the success of local businesses. Is that, you know, that's an example of a value. You're supporting local businesses. You could also be, uh, taking creative approaches, like what you talked about in John Day, of, of using, uh, innovative strategies or incentives to help move forward. Is there anything that anyone can come up with that is important value to you?
I tell you a clean environment.
Okay.
And I know we have a little problem with smoke sometimes, but overall it is good here.
Okay. And is that clean in the sense of kind of how people take care of things? Or is it clean and also environmentally?
Environmentally, yeah. Well, I mean, the other thing is important too, because you don't wanna see, you know, rub each place is all over the place, but yeah.
Okay.
Driving out and seeing trees, river streams running and.
Okay. Okay. Do you see the youth involved in the community?
A lot, I think they volunteer for. For the few that there are, I mean, they do quite a bit.
Yeah, sixty percent of your population is school age.
Well, I mean, a lot of these kids are involved in numerous.
You know, you've got community involvement as well.
Okay, so you value the community being involved, okay? Even if they don't disagree or agree with you all the time? Even if they don't agree, okay, different opinion is better, right? Okay. Is that a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I, I think most would be able to say we value our freedom here. And when I say freedom, I'm just saying, oh, we're a good country or something, but I'm, I'm speaking more on rules and regulations, but we're not, we're not. We're ourselves into a corner saying, oh, my goodness, we can't do this, we can't do that. We've got a lot of flexibility here, um, and we, you know, approve projects and do things, so.
No, we can't even do that stuff.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, a lot of housing.
Sorry, I have CCRs here.
Controll.
So, so you're able to kind of move, move projects forward without a lot of rules and regulations?
Sure, easily.
Yeah, okay. Uh, anything else?
I would say education also because we have some very good scholarships here.
Okay.
It really, I think, is an incentive for maybe kids to go on to school because they can get those scholarships.
Does that entice the people to leave the community type?
No, it entices some to stay at their kids because they have to go to school four years at the iPhone.
I've heard people say they came back simply for that because their kids to get, get the significant scholarship.
So that, that really is an incentive to, to have families return. So even though you may lose the, the college edge kids, they come back.
Well, now a lot of them do college from home.
Okay. Anything else?
We touched on it before, but our heritage is one of our huge values, just the culture that we have here and I can't not say family, I mean, that kind of goes to our heritage. A lot of the families have been here since like you started, so.
I grew up in a town of two hundred people. They were all my relatives. I left because of that. In, in northern Maine, but yes, family, family is, is a, I also, my, my, my grandfather, my mom's dad was the mayor of the town that I grew up in for thirty-nine years, so. So, yeah, it was, but, uh, it's kind of hard to live in a town that tiny. It's hard to, to really have anything other than, especially once the school closed because really what we, we had was a church and a school and a post office. All right, so, these are things that you kind of need to make sure you have, you know, that, it's kind of that, what I call a little bit the heart and soul of the community, the things you value the most, the things you don't want to lose. So, as you're going forward and you're encouraging growth, you need to think about those to make sure that those are not, that those are maintained, that you're not just growing to grow or just, you know, putting incentives out there that don't necessarily have a purpose. So you really need to kind of think about, you know, what are the values when we're moving forward? What are, so what are our strategies? So, I'm going kind of fast here, is everyone okay? We need a, a break or anything? All right. So, if you had to put it into goals, top three to five, we kind of talked about the change agenda, but they really wasn't, you know, it wasn't a specific goal. So, when you're putting goal statements together, goals are really kind of that, this is what we want to happen. It doesn't necessarily have the how, it talks about the what. What, what, what do we want to, what are the goals that we wanna see? What are the most important things? And these kind of things, you know, could be for a shorter term because quite often, you know, maybe you'll have a twenty-year vision, but every two to three years you update your goals because hopefully you're accomplishing where, where you wanna go. So, has anyone thought of what a goal would be for the town of Lakeview in the next three years?
Get the, get our water filter system up.
Yeah, it's been a second.
Okay. Improvements completed. Is this important to the other things to happen?
Probably the number one thing.
It's hard to attract businesses with brown water.
Brown people, right? Yeah, I heard it's also even tourists that like brown laundry, but.
And they're convincing that it's safe to drink?
Yeah. Okay, so this is something that's very, very specific to something that needs to be accomplished in the next three to five years, so. And I know that there have our efforts that are started on this one, so. Uh, another goal?
Tell everybody it's concentrated, huh? The water system.
Goals are the hardest.
They are.
To put into words.
Heck, in our group.
Okay. All right, I'm going to divert just a little because this is kind of my thing, but there are a lot of different ways of approaching economic growth. I call it create, community development, entrepreneurship, expansion of existing businesses, retention of existing businesses, recruitment of new businesses, workforce development, so that you can fill the jobs you have that aren't filled, so. So, if you're looking at economic growth and your, one of your goals is to increase economic growth, is there a, a focus area?
We need to work on the workforce here. We don't have the people to fill the jobs that we have correctly.
Okay.
And you can't grow without employees.
Cause there's a whole lot of different strategies to this than if you were doing entrepreneurship, right? Okay. So, the workforce, I know from looking at kind of the fact that you have a whole lot of unemployed thirty-year-olds for, and I'm, I'm puzzled.
DUIs, we can't pass a verdict.
That was my conclusion, but that wasn't what I, I wanted to jump to. So, so part of that, so it's not just development, but it's also workforce, uh, rehabilitation now.
That would be a good way to put it.
Okay. Is it also through people, recruiting people? I mean, expansion of, of folks moving into the community too?
Well, that, that right there, you know, people moving in, into the community puts you right back into your housing again.
Okay. So.
Everybody's into housing.
It's kind of a double-edged sword.
It is? To be able to recruit people, you need places.
It's a priority.
To be able to build places, you need.
Because we have too many people taking up space that are not productive.
Okay, so workforce development and rehabilitation, is this something that the town has influence over? Are there, are there strategies and things that you think that you could do as a incorporated community that could help with that?
We have that workforce program. That's state funded or through KCC, partnership with KCC, right? I don't, I don't see where the town honestly would be able to provide any financial or physical needs aside from, you know, supporting the current.
So it's in partnership with another, with, with KCC and WorkSource?
Yeah, I think.
WorkSource, I think is what it's called.
Yeah. And, and my thought, you know, and this is not just in Lakeview, but I'd love to see the schools doing more trade training that they used to do, that they don't do anymore because, you know, we don't have a child coming from high school that's had a year or two's experience in mechanics going into a job here because they just don't offer that anymore, obviously for budget reasons, I mean, various reasons. But same with electricians, plumbers, we have a shortage of those because we don't have the trades in the schools.
Where you can.
So this, this is a universal problem? Just so you know, but it is also something that has been, you know, could, we could look at strategies and ways that perhaps you could get to helping improve that or, or providing, you know.
I, I think it'd be great if we, and this is where, you know, there's a lot of liability in it, so you have to really analyze it. Where you have the work program where the kids, you know, come out and they work alongside our, our town employees that do certainly different avenues. That's probably the only aspect I really see the town will contribute with that, the cost of that.
It would be a life and apprenticeship, I think. But then you run into all these liability issues.
Right.
Can't do that.
So there are, yes, there are constraints.
So for me, one of the things I think that we need to focus on is improving our parks. When you think, really for the recreational aspects of what those that live here, who bought, you know, a lot, you always hear people, which blows my mind even to say this, about this county and the community, but there's nothing to do, you know, it's like, are you serious?
There's lots to do, you just gotta get out.
Yeah, that's the thing, and so, but, you know, we could, we could definitely use some improvements on our parks and even adding equipment or, you know, fixing, you know, even the base. And I know, I think of Burns, when I was on the city council in Burns, I kind of pushed for this, that we had a revolving ten thousand. It's a side each year, but it would never would grow. It was always, oh, it's in ten thousand each year. And I said, well, we need more than ten thousand, so can we please keep that and put it in the capital improvement fund for later? And then eventually Washington Park up there got, if you've been to Burns and seen it, Washington. It's got a super nice soft padded, you know, park and all new equipment, yeah, and it's super nice. And, you know, I think of our splash park, Kitty Park, if we turn it into a splash park or something else. You know, I know the city government's got a really nice splash park there and, you know, get people out to it in different ways and, and less, you know, liability and cost.
But even like, we don't even have basketball courts anymore.
Yeah, there's not.
Outward basketball courts.
School problem too, that I'm not sure how we can resolve, but, yeah, there's not anywhere to play ball.
Years ago of turning that tennis court up by the swimming pool.
Yeah, we actually approved it.
Yeah, because those ones don't get used.
Some of those things actually really can happen if you have a really good grant writer. So, you know, again, that gets into the implementation, but I, I do know from working with the city of Milan a lot, the last couple of years, they have been able to access funding to put in restrooms, to improve their pool and to just really keep their park up and, and it's a pristine place to go. And a lot of it is because they have youth funding available through Parks and Recreation and other, other opportunities that are out there for, for, for. So that is, is a role that the town can, can help with if you have the capacity for that type of thing. So, you know, it, it's not unrealistic to think about that as something that you could make happen. What about the fairgrounds? Is that under, that's not really under your purview, it's under the county.
They've done a really great job improving that over the years. And they've got some long-term plans on that, so they're working towards.
Okay. So we're going to improve the water filtration system. So we're going to help existing businesses grow, helping them find employees that can go to work. That's, that's a challenge. You're going to improve your parks and your activities for youth. So that talks about youth involvement, it talks about community, it talks about just kind of families and cultural heritage. Your change agenda is, really talks more about properties and new developments and this sort of thing, which I don't see a goal that goes to that specifically.
We need to basically revitalize what we have, I think, before we do forward it.
Okay, so a community revitalization strategy or action plan?
I know we've had them in the past. Didn't we have an incentive, was that for home, for communities, about cleaning up your home?
They had them for, you know, first they had them for the wood stove and then the, and then there was some weatherization. Windows and insulation and things.
Was this there, was it four years ago about stored homes, like the appearance of homes? A couple hundred dollars and it was.
I don't know if that one.
I wasn't there.
Either.
Housing rehab then is, is one of those.
It's a big thing.
It is.
And that is a role that, at least the, there are ways that you could apply for funding that, that could go to that. It's one of the, one of the potential strategies that you could look at, so. What about the downtown itself?
Well, we've got, I don't know, I'm sitting here, I think I counted five or six empty buildings sitting up town that could be utilized.
Do you know what the constraints to why they're not being used?
Most of them are in pretty poor condition.
Okay.
And that's, I think, the problem that a lot of people, someone wanted to use one, they probably would have to do considerable remodeling and leaks and those buildings are.
Well, a prime example is the expansion of the DHS building where they ended up tearing the whole building down.
Yeah. I heard about.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
They tore the whole thing down. It was, it was not cost effective bringing it to go when the condition was intense, they tore it down and rebuilt it.
And other people have, it's overpriced.
That's a big issue, overpriced.
You look at Medford, you look at Medford and they're ninety-five dollars a square foot, the building, you know, at the lake view, they're a hundred and thirty-five.
Well, in some of these places, even if, if somebody were to rent them tomorrow, they're unable to support them on a monthly basis due to heating issues, air conditioning.
So there's also a weatherization component.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a big one.
So part of what I'm going through is kind of the eight things of an economic, or of a, a city strategic plan. So those eight things are mission and vision. Have you created a change agenda? Do you have strategic themes? And do you have strategic objectives? So what we really haven't talked about yet, you know, this is kind of the, the five, four, four kind of overall goals that would be a focus for the community for the next. And really, how you should be looking at this, this should also be directing you and staff on how time is being spent and how funds are being allocated. So you, you need to think along those lines that some of this is doable, some of this is maybe partnerships with other folks. And, you know, but it really, you need to eventually align all of this with the day-to-day operations and how, how you as a community and town council are functioning. So, you know, thinking along those lines too. You know, some things are not in your, you know, ability to make the changes, like perhaps the workforce rehabilitation, but you can advocate for and make sure that the resources that are out there and you can use your elected official positions to be advocates for those. There's also, I learned a very powerful power of community going to Salem. I went with a chamber in Plymouth Falls and they had actually, over a day and a half, we visited with forty different legislatures. We went with two pages of priorities for the county, for the chamber in Plymouth County. And every single door was open to us. They were almost intimidated by the fact that we had eight or ten people showing up in their offices at one time and that appreciated by the fact that we actually came all the way from Plymouth Falls to Salem. You know, it's a lot further to go, to come, leave Salem and come to Plymouth Falls than it is to go to where you live. So just, you know, that's a little bit of an aside, but it is a role that you as elected officials, you know, you have that, you know, that elected official role where you can be advocates, not just in your community, but you can be change agents too by making sure that these issues are highlighted at the legislature. And right now, they're throwing money and inventing it and, and making it all over the place up there, so. It's kind of interesting. Has anyone ever been to Washington DC? All right. So I'm going to ask if we can take like a pipe and a break.
Yeah, sure.
And you trust me.
You can use that one, it'll warm your kidneys.